I love this so much is you are the friends that lift up. You are the friends that encourage. You are.
So bless you.
Keep it up ladies.
But Carolyn, that's because we all know Jesus. People in our families don't necessarily know the Lord. So we can't make him stay there and encourage you.
Yeah, but there are a lot of ladies who know Jesus who don't keep their mouths shut at mothers' alone hurt. There's a lot of ladies who don't.
That's why good work. Gotta say something nice, keep your mouth shut. That's a way.
Anyway, you guys are right.
You're right.
And you know what else Kathy, the last thing your mother would have enjoyed yesterday is to see her kids fighting and upset with each other. You absolutely handled that.
Moms just don't like that.
No, they don't need it.
Very good. Just keep doing what you're doing Kathy.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You know what, Jesus loves you.
He'll help.
Yes.
Valerie.
So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna share that, you know, I'm kind of a hermit by nature. I kinda hide and I'm a hermit. But David and I would go to so many events and he was always the photographer and I was always sitting by myself and nobody ever, ever, ever came over to say hi. You know, I'm in the midst of all these ministers and ministers lives and all these people. And it was just, I just had the feeling so sorry for myself and I just have this pity party. Nobody likes me, I guess I'll just go eat worms. The Lord really felt with me. And he told me, he says, if you want friends, you have to be friendly.
That's right.
And so I thought, oh, okay. Well, just so, just so you know, the ministry is a very vulnerable position to be in and you get hurt constantly. So to put yourself out there is difficult, okay? And so I know that other ministers' wives feel the same way as I felt, you know? So I would start, when we would go to these events, I would start looking for somebody who was sitting all by themselves and nobody was talking to. And I would go sit with them and just say, introduce myself and start talking to them. And pretty soon, I had friends. You know what I mean? And so every time we would have one of these events, I would look for somebody who looked alone and lonely. And I would go and sit with them and say, hi, you know, I'm Joanne and we passed you down and blah, 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 blah. And just introduce myself. And pretty soon, I had friends all over the place. I'd go into these events and, oh, hi Joanne. You know, all these people that had been by themselves that I didn't know before were now my friends. And when we, you've gotta be vulnerable to somebody to have a relationship with them. And sometimes it gets your feelings hurt. Do you know what I'm saying? But vulnerability is what makes relationship, is allowing somebody to hurt you and you still love them in spite of it. And that's what human relationships is all about. Because frankly, no matter how much you love somebody, that man that just left hurts my feelings on a regular basis. But I still love him, we forgive each other, we talk about it, we work through it. You know what I'm saying? That's what human relationship is all about. It's learning to be vulnerable, learning to be hurt, and then learning to forgive. And I'll be honest with you, one of the people in this room that is the best at making friends that I know of is that lady sitting right up there teaching this class. She has an amazing capacity
Excellent.
of developing friendships, you know? And I've been watching you Valerie. And I think, you know, I need to be more like her. Because she seems to know how to make lasting friendships. And there's, that's a gift. You've got a real gift for that Valerie. And I, I, can I say I envy that? But I mean, I vow you what you've got, maybe you have a gift there.
Thank you.
That was all beautifully stated Joanne.
Yes, it really was.
Thank you for sharing, because that's what we getting ready to get into next, is how? How does a close relationship develop? You know, with other human beings?
Joanne just answered that.
She said, it's really initiation. You gotta be an initiator. When I first moved here, I moved here because I came to visit my daughter who is silent here as a temporary, what do you call it, travel nurse. And so me and my mother came up to visit her and I told my mother, I said, I think I'm gonna retire here. I like it here. And I thought about it, I said, okay. So when I moved, my granddaughter was living here at the time as well. So when I moved here, why did my granddaughter move? She moved back to Illinois. I'm like, wait a minute, you can't go anywhere. And then when my daughter's asylum was over, she left, so I'm here by myself, right? And I'm thinking, y'all are wrong. So I knew in my, in my own heart that the first place that I'm gonna find some really good friends are in the church. And so I need to find a church first. So that was my first thing. And then where I lived, they have like the rec center, recreation. So I started doing the water aerobic thing. So I met a whole nother group of women, you know? And then I knew my neighbors. So I said, okay. And then my friends back in Illinois said, aren't you lonely? I said, I'm meeting new friends. I said, it's exciting. But anyway, to make a long story short, initiate, you know, you just have to be an initiator. And a lot of people don't, don't have that. So I hope this class will help you with that. Joanne gave a great example. Okay.
Exactly.
So.
It's all up to us, it's up to us individually.
Yeah, it is.
It's not up to everyone to come and fall over us.
So Sue, how do you make new friends?
Well, what Joanne says is so true, but it's easier for me because I have an outgoing personality.
Okay.
But it's hard for someone who's very shy, like my husband. He, you know, he doesn't have very many friends. He said, if you die first, I'm gonna just go live with the kids. And I said, well, we have boys, what do you think the daughter-in-law's gonna think about that? And you just have to develop a relationship with the people who are around you. And who better than church friends? People who know the Lord with you. I mean, those are the people that you can depend on. A lot of times you can depend on family, especially if they don't know the Lord. Because they don't have the same values. And I feel perfectly fine down here, there's no way, if Deon died first, there's no way I'd get out of you. You know, this is, this is my family.
Well, that's really the way it's supposed to be.
What about you Kathy?
Well, when I first moved out here, I didn't wanna move out here. I didn't wanna, I came out here because I had family out here, but there was reasons for coming out here. And the Lord kept pushing me. He says, this is where you need to be. Because I was living in a mess. Where I shouldn't have been, where I would never grow and mature and be who I am now. And I came to visit my parents for vacation and I said, I'm never coming back. Lord says, yes you are. This is where you need to be. And my sister directed me to the Pacific Church. And I thought about it, I said, yeah, I'm beginning after. It took me a whole two years to actually make friends. I was that lonely. I was crying to go back home. Laid up at home on my back because I had injuries with my legs. And crying the whole time. Wanted to go back home, but the Lord said, no. He says, it's a mess back home. You're going nowhere. You're staying here. So Donna Nelson introduced herself to me and it started friendship with that. One thing after another.
Who introduced her?
Donna Nelson.
Okay.
I'm so mad at Donna, she has her house for sale and she's moving north.
Oh, no. When is she supposed to move?
Any idea?
Whenever she sells her house.
Seattle?
No, Marana.
Because of allergy conditions.
She thinks the air's better up there.
I don't think so. My daughter lives in Catalina, it's not any better there.
It's a drive.
But. Lord, forgive me for being mad at Donna.
And see, change the subject, but the same thing. I have neighbors across my porch. It's like stairs to climb, one neighbor here and then me.
Too many stairs.
And every neighbor I've had, I introduce myself. And when they get sick or they need stuff, I'm right there. The best that I can be a friend. And when I go to my families, I always bring stuff home, when there's stuff to bring home, leftovers. Because we celebrate everything.
So be there for them, that's a, that's a.
I'm always there. And then they're willing to help me carry my oxygen tank or anything I have struggled with. Even Veronica does that too.
When she first, can I say something? Go ahead. When she first moved to those, to the apartments that we are at, at that time, Michael was alive.
Her husband, yep.
She, I knew her by Hi Abi and Hi Kathy and all this kind of stuff.
Who was Michael?
Her ex-husband.
My ex-boyfriend.
Oh.
Yeah.
They became good friends.
Me and Michael were like buddies.
And, and you know, and I was, and I just knew her and everything and he would tell me what, and I'd go, you go up to her. And one time they were talking, to make the long story short, they became good buddies. And I said, babe, you go, and I said, uh-uh. You, you introduce yourself to her, you go ask her. Until after that, then after Michael passed away, she, she started.
One thing led to another, I said, I'm gonna hold on to you like glue. You're not going anywhere. Because I, I knew she was saved, but she wasn't coming to church. And I said, you're not going anywhere, you're coming to church with me. And the relationship started from there.
Okay, there we go.
Yep.
So, okay. So what we're gonna do is we're going, on page three, we're going to, these are ways that you can, it's steps that you can take to build relationships, even if you're shocked. So let's just go around the table, starting with number two. Read number two.
Okay, it's.
Establish.
Establish common.
Ground.
Ground. Finding common.
Interest.
Interest or shared experiences helps to create.
To create.
Create a bond. This could be anything from hobbies, favorites, movies, or similar life experiences.
Okay. Okay, you wanna read the next one?
Invest time. Building friendships take time and effort. Spend spending time together, whether grabbing coffee, walking, or attending events together.
Okay, number four, somebody wanna read number four? Go ahead.
Number four?
Yes.
Be genuine and authentic. Authenticity is crucial in any relationship. Be yourself and encourage the other person to do the same. Authentic connections are more likely to withstand the test of time.
Okay, Lauren, number five.
Communication. Good communication is essential for any friendship to thrive. Be open, honest, and transparent in your interactions. Listen actively and show empathy towards your friend's thoughts and feelings.
Okay, can I stop you just for a second? Now, that's what I'm working on, is being a better listener. Because I find when you really pay attention to what people are saying, you get to know them better.
Exactly.
And, and so number five is, is a biggie.
It is.
I remember before I retired, it was this lady that used to come into the lounge where we ate lunch. And every time she would come in, everything was about her. You couldn't get a word in. Whenever you would start, you know, talking and sharing, she would just change the whole thing around and it would always be about her. And I thought it was just me. And so I would just, you know, just cater to it, let her go, you know? Somebody else would just, she said, you can't get a word in. And I'm thinking, okay, so it's not just me. And, you know, I tried to tell her politely, I said, you know what, I've listened to you, can you listen to me now? But, you know, just listening to other people is very important. Especially, you gotta let them get a word in, you know?
That's what, that experience too.
Okay. So somebody wanna read number six?
Karen Turner, number five.
No, we read five.
Six.
Six.
Oh, six, okay.
Build trust. Trust is the foundation of any strong friendship. Be reliable, keep your promises, and maintain confidentiality so necessary. Trust is earned over time through consistent actions and behaviors.
Seven, show support. Be there for your friend in both good times and bad. Offer support, encouragement, and a listening ear when needed. Celebrate their successes and provide comfort during challenges.
Okay, I wanna say something to that. I have a friend that I grew up with. And I was always there for her. She went through some very, very, very tough times. But when it was time for me to go through something, she wasn't there. And I asked the Lord about that. I said, is she still a friend? I mean, don't she see me? You know, when my mother passed away and I needed help with my mother, she was supposed to come and help me with my mother one day so I could go run errand. And she called me and said, you know, I'm not gonna be able to, she called me at the last minute and told me she couldn't do it. And that just really hurt me, I'm thinking, don't you understand that I was depending on you? And so every now and then, it might be somebody that's put into your life that you're friends with them, but you can't depend on them. I still love her. We still do things together, but she just doesn't have my back like I had hers, you know?
I, when I lived in the White Mountains, I had a wonderful friend, I just loved to pieces. And she was diabetic and she had learned to be dependent on blood, people, and things. And she was one that would do, you know, she was like that. She would, you know, she got a lot, but she didn't give a lot. And she didn't keep friends very long. And I was her longest friend. And one day, I was going through exams, I was going through a lot of stuff at school and I had to stay focused and I really had needed her help for some things. And of course, she wasn't there. But I, I really need, so I took her to breakfast one day and I says, you know, I love you so much, but right now, I can't hang out with you anymore. I've gotta stay focused for school. I can't be there like you need me to be there. You're, you're not, you're always not available for when I need help. So I'm going to just let you know that, that I can't do this with you anymore for a while. Well, and she was like, okay, I'm crushed, you know, of course, and I knew it hurt her. But a couple of years later, I went to visit my mother-in-law. And this, this lady happened to be at the house with a couple of other friends of ours. Because we were all kind of a group and she came up to me and she says, you know, you're the only one who has ever been real with me and told me why this was happening. And she says, I asked the Lord about that and he confronted me. He says, this is, you were the only one willing to be bold enough to do something about that situation. And because of that, I have made a big life change. And, and she went around apologizing to friends that she had done that to you. Not realizing that she had been a sucker up of everybody's energies, but never a giver of, of anything. And it took me be honest with her and sitting down in a loving manner and telling her the way it was. Not because I wanted to be, but because, for her best interest.
Right.
And then, and then God took that and worked with her with it. And, and then she came back and told me, she said, that was the kindest thing anybody had ever done for her in her whole life. And so I was like, oh, wow, it was amazing. But I felt bad that I had done that to her. But later, when she came to me and said that, it was like, God had a purpose. He had a reason for doing that. And I, I wasn't being bad, I was doing what he wanted me to do, but I didn't really know that. It wasn't something I thought of being great and courageous. I was just trying to get the picture cleared up here.
Thank you for sharing.
That was really, that was the best thing I could have done.
It was, and she told me it was the best thing anyone had ever done for her. Because it made her go back to Jesus and ask Him, what's going on in my life? And then she was able to make the change.
A lot of us have, have personality flaws that we're not aware of.
That's true.
And, and we need to be, you know, we need to have those pointed out so that we can change.
Sue, when you said that, it's a game that when we have family events and all the family is over and we're eating like Thanksgiving Day or something like that, we used to play this game in Illinois and it was called the hot seat. And so each person in the family would get a turn. And the rules are, you can't say anything, you just have to listen. And so people would tell you all your good character that they see in you. And then on the other hand, they have to tell you everything that's negative. And so we had to make up these rules. But you have to make sure you get the rules together before you start the game. And so everybody was holding everybody accountable. So when it got to me, oh, my kids really let me have it. And it was like the, the Lord was showing me, this is how they see you. So, so that taught me a lot. No, I didn't, I'm thinking, and they're all saying it, you know?
What?
Yeah, we call it the hot seat game. Everybody did well except one granddaughter, she just couldn't take it. She just started crying and we said, well, you know, it's all family here. But anyway, that's, that's good.
I got involved in volleyball and, and now I'm the president and I'm thinking, you know, I kinda took it because it was assigned to me, you know, and I had to go through it. It was a big hassle to become GBR volleyball club. Anyway, and I'm wondering, what am I doing in this? But you know what, God has showed me. Because I get involved in people's lives now, I know when they're sick, you know, when, when they, when I invite them to come play, you know, I send out a text and find out how many are coming to play. And I find out the ones that are sick or the ones that are taking care of parents or whatever. And I, God showed me that I can reach out to these people in this manner to help them. Some of them are working and they've got parents to take to their appointments and everything like that. They all know I'm a Christian, you know? And so this is how God showed me that I'm supposed to minister. So, you know, I just, I covet your prayers about this too, because I'm meant to represent Christ. That's the goal.
It's part of dying to self, you know? That, that is really good doing that, you're letting Him use you like that. Because we all need to die to self.
I mean, it's an outreach. Because most of these people are not Christians. There are a few, but anyway, so.
We pray that the Lord will bless you with this ministry. That He would open doors and that He would just give you authority in that area to, to get a people group that you can minister to.
Yes.
You must have asked God to use you one day, one, one, some, one time in the past. That's a serious prayer.
Can somebody read number eight? Can somebody read number eight so you can practice it?
Respect boundaries. Respect your friends' boundaries and personal space. Everything is on a comfort level. So it's essential to be mindful of this and not push them beyond their limits.
That's a good one too. Number nine?
Handle conflict constructively. Disagreements and conflict are natural in any relationship. Learn to address issues openly and constructively. Focus on finding solutions rather than placing blame.
Okay. And then number 10?
Stay connected. Maintain regular contact, contact with your friends even when life gets busy. Check in with them periodically, whether it's through text calls or hanging out with, with the person.
I had a friend that, that I went to, we spent the day together a couple of weeks ago. And she goes, you know, it's really cool to be able to, to, we haven't seen each other in six months and we go out about every six months, her birthday and my birthday, kind of month comes along and we go, we take each other to dinner for our birthdays. And we go shopping and just kinda hang out. And she goes, well, it's certain, you know, it's nice, you can pick up where we left off. We can say weird things to each other that, and everybody would say, think some odd weird stuff today, you know, we live in. But we know, we know we're okay with each other, it's just, just okay. And it does, it was, you know, you can feel comfortable even after a long period of time.
Keeping that regular contact is really important. And it's, we live, even at our age, we live in busy times. Our lives are, a lot of us very busy, so it's almost like you need, to me, maybe write it in the calendar. So time doesn't fly by and you don't realize. It's good. Because you can lose a close relationship you worked on just by getting busy. And they maybe read that, well, you don't care. Or, you know, you just be sensitive to the, I really appreciate what they're saying there, be sensitive to that.
I used to have to make appointments just to have lunch with my mother-in-law. I lived in the same house. It sounds funny, but it was actually a reality. I had to literally get on her calendar in order to spend some time with her because she was so busy. But, you know, we have to think about that too with, with our friends that we wanna have close to us. We need to put them in our calendars so we don't forget.
I need a written one, this metal one slips every time. I need a written one.
Have a written one and an electronic one. They have to match up though, or you're really in trouble.
I can listen to the Holy Spirit too, because sometimes I want to hear those words. Text somebody. Our oldest daughter, her, her best friend, she just was diagnosed, she's in her 40s, had a double mastectomy and, and now she's gonna have to hysterectomy and it just breaks my heart. But I thought the Lord wanted me to send her cards, you know, from the Dollar Store, get a bunch of encouraging cards. And our daughter told me, she goes, Mom April told me the other day, they had a fundraiser, she said, every day right after treatment day, she got your card. But I said, well, that's the Lord. It is, I said, I had nothing to do with a mail, I just try and put it in the mail whenever I hear him saying, send a card. No, I think that it's listening to those little prompts you might be on. I'll do it later than us being that helping you now here.
Yes, we can think that, but unless we act on it. So I like that you're acting on what was prompting you to do. Because they have no idea what our thoughts are. Yes, so what you said was so important to just go ahead and obey, do it.
Yes, we're gonna get into that too before we leave here today. So that's good.
Just gave you the introduction.
So on your page four, we're gonna go down to number four. We already talked about what the benefits were with other human beings, so we're just gonna go down to four. What are the downfalls of not having a close relationship?
Gosh, loneliness.
Definitely get depressed.
What else? Somebody else says something? Depression. Depression.
Yeah, when I, when my husband passed away, if it hadn't have been for the ladies in this church and my neighborhood ladies, because I had a, I have a tendency to go through depression and that. And they've all held me up and it's been fantastic, he's been gone almost. He's been gone almost three years now. I still hurt, but they all held me up and it's.
I know how you feel, because I lost my coach too. And I, and I gave, and Nina was the one that introduced me here and introduced me to Penny when she first started grief share.
You know, there's a few scriptures I could think of. Number one is don't forsake the assembling of the sinners. Because the body of Christ is built to build each, you know, to build the next person up.
I like that phrase, Valerie, the body of Christ is built to build each, build each person up.
Yeah.
That's a good statement.
There's scripture like iron sharpens iron. And then two is better than one. Can anybody else think of any?
You know, when Karen was talking about that, she was very, very receptive to help too. And that is, it, it works both ways. You could have gone into a deep depression and just not paid any attention to the people who were trying to help you.
Well, I was fighting it. I'll admit that. You know, my kids are two hours away, so they couldn't be here all the time either. You know, so. But being raised, I was raised in a Christian home. I knew that's not where I needed to go, because if I did, I'd never dig myself back out. It was to help friends.
Some people need to be prodded though. You know, you were just very receptive.
One thing about the body of Christ, when me and my mother lived together, we attended a Baptist church. And I outgrew that church. And I said, Mom, I'm, I'm gonna, I said, I need more than this. And she said, well, you do what you gotta do, you know? I said, she said, but I'm staying here. She ain't got comfortable, she had her friends. And so I did, I left and I went to another church. But every now and then, I would go back to that church in fellowship, because I, you know, I knew everybody. But when my mother was at her lowest and her, it wasn't long before she passed away. My mother sung, she, she could sing beautiful. So she was in the choir. She sang with the praise and worship team. And so the leader of the praise and worship team called me up. She said, you think your mom would mind? At this point, my mother was bedroom. She said, you think your mom would mind or would you mind if the choir would come over and sing? I said, that would be beautiful. I don't know how they all got it now. But they all came in, when they came through the front door, they came in singing her favorite song. And I kinda surprised them. And she was trying to join in with them and they were all around the bed. I got videos of it. And so I said, you know, the body of Christ is just beautiful. That just really uplifted me as well. You know, and every now and then, when I get in my little sad moments, I go back and I look at all those videos, you know, where they were talking to her and, and. So the body of Christ, that's why I always think my children, you need a church home. Because you, you're not gonna get out of the world, you're gonna get out of the body of Christ.
But you know what? Someone asked me once, we were thinking of leaving a church that we were a part of. Someone said, well, you probably aren't getting fed there. And I said, you know, it's not about being fed. It's about feeding others. You don't go to a church looking for something for yourself. You look to how you can help other people. I hate that expression, we're just not getting fed. You need to go someplace where you're getting fed. That's so selfish.
To that part, it's, it's our responsibility as a child of God to.
To eat.
To feed on the Word and to know and to grow ourselves.
I know.
Not to necessarily rely on another person to.
You can't.
We, we can glean from them, but we're supposed to be in front of the Word ourselves.
And feed others with the knowledge that we get. I just had to say that, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
That's okay.
So, okay, so can you think of any other downfalls of not having close relationships?
Well, you won't have the encouragement, the caring, listening ear or expressions of love shown to you. And you won't be showing love to anybody else either. And you become, people can become, I'm sure we've all known people like this, become very withdrawn. And I can, I can give you an example of that. My husband's family is from the Upper Peninsula in Michigan in a particular area where all of the people are of Finnish descent.
Oh yeah, I had that cup last night.
You wanna tell them what that cup says?
Oh, I'm trying to remember. You should be happy as you're in the presence of.
No, living with the Finn builds character.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Living with the Finn.
My daughter gave me that cup.
You must have a lot of character then.
Anyway, there's a lot of loners, okay? There, a lot of heavy drinking, a lot of loners. And men.
I know, I'm living with one.
Okay.
Let me, let me specify that, Ron.
Yeah. Anyway, and like my mother-in-law was very outgoing, very outgoing, friendly person. Of a different nationality, okay? And my father-in-law is a pretty hard guy. Anyway, my mother-in-law is very outgoing and she would take a couple pieces of cake over to these, one of these men that lived in the area. And one of them wouldn't open the door to Ellie. She's like the friendliest person there is, the easiest person to talk to, very gentle soul and not at all intimidating. And he would not open the door. She said, I saw him looking around the corner. I says, what did you do? She said, I banged on that door harder. And she said, I said, Anna, open this door. And he wouldn't. He was in his house miserable and alone for so many decades. He went out in the back forty of the, of his woods and shot himself, took his life. My point to that is, there were several men that did that. And that's how they ended their lives. It's like, what is wrong? How can life be so, so sad and horrible to you that you walk back into the woods with a rifle with that intent, you know? But they had isolated themselves so totally. One of the reasons my mother-in-law says is because they're so miserable. Nobody wants to be around them, you know? And that's probably a lot, a lot of that is true. But it, it's a sad situation to isolate yourself. It's never good. It's not good for anybody.
I have a, also a cousin who was like that. And we didn't really get to know each other until we were adults. And I would always invite her to, to something. And she would always be to herself. And then she told me one day, she said, Valerie, I'm not like you. I said, what do you mean? Explain that. And then she said, I just, she said, I'm not like most people. And so I got her to, you know, get out of the house. And people in the family were saying, how did you get her to get out? And I was just telling her, you know, you don't need to be by yourself. God created you to fellowship, you know? And that's what I'm constantly telling Ron. If, if I would just leave him alone, he would be by himself. And so when I moved where I am, I said, you know, come go to this. You know, my neighbors are always having stuff. I said, come go to this with me. I really don't wanna go. Please don't make me go to that. And I said, you really need to get out of, I said, because you can't live in this world by yourself. And I said, and I might not always be around. I said, you need to make friends. I said, because people need people. Sure enough, he had some car problems right in the driveway. And Bill, who lives across the street, works on cars all the time. And he said, well, can you take me over here tonight? I said, why don't you just go across the street and ask Bill if he can help you? He said, well, can you call him up for that? I said, no. I said, I'm not going anywhere. I said, see, remember I told you we need people, need each other? I said, oh, I said, he'd probably be glad to come and help you.
Bless, right?
And so he, he, he wouldn't go. But he stayed out there long enough trying to figure it out himself that Bill saw him. And, and I saw Bill coming across the street. He said, what's going on, Ron? You know, and he fixed it just like that. So Ron came in the house, he said, oh, he, I said, that's why you need your hands. You know, you can't live by yourself. You know, I said, you need to get out more often. So he, he said to me later, he said, well, I'm just not like you, Mom. He said, you're a jolly Oprah. He said, I just, I'm just comfortable. I said, okay, you know, if you stay by yourself, then you're gonna be miserable. So I'm hoping that that little lesson taught him something. Yeah, but I think it's part of the PTSD, you know? That's my prayer, is that he gets out of that. But if I just left him alone, he would just, just be by himself.
There's a lot of people that.
I think dealing with someone from the war that has PTSD, they do tend to shut themselves off. Some of it's because they, in some cases, they are afraid they'll lose the person that they have a relationship with. I would say probably the encouragement of other people is more needed than a person who doesn't have PTSD. And encouraging somebody to come over and sit down, have a cup of coffee with him or, you know, more like you gotta get it started. Because there's a lot of reasons, but we finally, I said, you're gonna get some help or I'm leaving. Because there was a lot of other things going on. And he did. And then learning from the Veterans Administration, from people who've been in war and stuff, how that works. And there's all kinds of wars besides military wars in our minds and our lives. But I would just say, in some cases, they will continue to stay like that. And they don't realize how it is making them unhappy till they see the difference of being with people. And I would just encourage people to call on Ron. And even if he doesn't like it at first.
Well, when he comes to church with me, he always tells me when he gets home, everybody was coming up to me, he said, what are you saying about me? So he's got this paranoid thing. He said, everybody's, he said, everybody knows my name, you know? I said, well, I said, we do pray for one another, you know? And so, anyway, to make a long story short, we got.
He was quiet when, when, when I introduced myself to him.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's very quiet.
I think we had a gentleman in our church in Washington. And I think part of it can be Satan. And he goes, he likes to separate people from the herd. And I don't mean work like a herd. But if he can get you alone.
I've talked about this.
My aunt had just lost my uncle two months ago. She said, I could easily become a hermit. So I said, oh, Lord, please don't. I gave her Penny's card for grief share. And I just said, just, if you wanna just call her? I said, you don't have to belong to the church. You don't have to go to church if you just wanna come and fellowship. And she has family around here, my aunts and uncles and everything. But when she said that, I could just easily be, I don't know, Lord, please give her that desire to get out and.
But I know what she's feeling, because I felt the same way. I could've just curled up in a ball and stayed there. But I knew I had to get out and, you know, try to get involved. That's why I started doing stuff at the church, just trying to bring, well, Joanne convinced me of a few things to do too.
I'm pretty good at pitching.
She had some jobs for it.
And now we came this long without you.
Know what she's going through, because that's.
It hurts.
It is. It'd be very easy for me not to.
I was, I was saying that too. You know, and still, I, I still have that, that he'll come back. But he, I know he's not gonna come back, you know? And he's been gone what, how, seven years?
Since 2015, it was October.
Well, we just pray to God was just, you know, continue to give you friends that, you know, surround you.
When he passed, when, when, when Michael passed away, it was Nina and John and then Kathy that I spent all my time in the hospital. And then after that, started getting, my grandma passed away and then my grandfather. And then I'm like, I'm all alone now.
I got a question for you. Who do you say Jesus is? Who is Jesus to you?
He's my Father and he's my, and he's my, my Savior.
So if you were gonna share with a five-year-old, one of your grandchildren, a little one, who Jesus is, what would you tell them?
Yes.
What would you tell them?
What would you say about Jesus?
That he, that, that, that he, he's, oh man, that's a very good question. And I have a granddaughter and I gave her, I found.
No, let's make it off the subject. Let's stick with this. I'm gonna hold you to this one. Who is Jesus? What would you tell your grandchild? It's just you and your time. And, and I'm doing this to help you to think.
She understands you when you talk. She knows what you're saying when you talk. She's old enough to learn from you.
Yes, so who is, you wanna tell, because you do need to talk to your grandchildren about Jesus. So what would you say? You pass? Are you still thinking? Okay.
Who would you say? So much. He's my friend. He takes care of me. He loves me. Because our grandson, I took care of him when I retired. And so I would say that too. We just, we lay him there because he never wanted to fall asleep by himself. And I lay there and he's there praying. Jesus hears you and he's gonna take care of you. You just talk to him. He's told many things to me, it's hard to put it to.
Who do you say Jesus is?
Well, he's my Savior, my friend, everything. He's, you know, the Comforter, the Wonderful, the, he's God, the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. There isn't any, he's everything, he's in everything, he's out everything.
I, I wrote that Jesus is my Savior, my Lord, my love. He's my best friend. He's the one that hugs me when I feel sad, lonely. He's the one that heals me. He's the one that pulls me when I'm falling down.
You listen to Veronica?
Yes, okay.
Yes, he's my supporter. He's everything to me. He is, he's my guardian angel. He's the one that goes with me everywhere. So I cannot live without him. He's my supporter.
You ladies at this table here?
Go ahead, Mariah.
We're getting to a point. We're getting ready to go to the next section. We really don't have a lot of time, but I really wanted to spend, we might have to come back to this next week.
So do you, do you want me to continue? I would probably say, because I'm thinking of a couple of five-year-olds, I've said this to them. Do you have any idea how much Jesus loves you? He made that red bird out at the bird feeder for you to watch and enjoy today. And those flowers in the backyard that you were picking? He wanted you to see them today and enjoy them. And he's happy that you picked them and loved them because he made them for you. And I do a lot of that kind of thing. And, you know, I love talking to them about Jesus because they are easy to talk to about God. They are willing learners and listeners and they're happy. And, you know, and I pray for them and say, he wants you to be with him forever in heaven, forever. It's very sad, but some people.
What can you say to a two-year-old? She's only two.
Say the same thing, whatever comes to your heart.
Okay, I'll give you an example. When she comes over and I have, you know, my little knickknacks on the, on the, and I said, and she sits down, I put out her, you know, her thrower on the floor. And she sits down and she turns around, she goes, and she goes like this. And I said, no. And then she starts, you know, and I said, Cassandra, don't touch that.
Two-year-olds know more than I think we do. And if you say it over and over again, as she gets older, she will start repeating what you say.
Right. She's over here. And I said, yeah.
Two-year-olds, two, two-year-olds.
That's the best time to.
You know, when you're, when you're talking about Jesus and how much you. You know, when you're talking about Jesus and how much you love Him, they just are fascinated with that. You know, because when you're holding them, saying, "I just love Jesus. He's given you to me. You are precious to Me, because Jesus loves you more." You can really feed into them that deep, deep love for Jesus from at all points, all time. You know, Jesus feels you when you're hurting. You know, you change in a diaper, you know, you're talking about Jesus. He's there, He makes them feel better. He'll do this for you, you know? And you're talking to them as if they understand and believe, because they do. They understand more than you think they do, and they can believe at a very, very young age, so...
So, remember that one time that I told you about Cassandra going into my bedroom, and she was, and she was, I told you that she was so quiet? That, you know, that little lamb that has the wings, and I played it? And she goes, "Ah." And I go, "That's the Lord's Prayer." And she goes, and she got it, and she was hugging it.
So, she understands something.
And precious about it.
And she was playing, and when she goes over to the house, now I do remember. She goes over to the house, and she goes straight to where that little lamb is at.
And doesn't the Spirit, no matter what age, even if a person is elderly, in a coma, or whatever, the Spirit responds to the name of Jesus. The Spirit's aligned to Jesus. Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, let's take one more person. In your own words, who do you say Jesus is?
Well, I can tell you. It's easy on me, because I've raised kids, even though they're not my own. But my niece and nephew, since Mom went back to work, Mom and Dad. And my nephew Logan, he had a situation where he... Well, there's actually two situations, but I'll give you one. Um, to where he lost his Papa, when he was like three or four years old. And Papa was his life. Because Papa would always come and spend time, after he'd come from a doctor's appointment, bring a little treat and play with him for five and an hour, and whatever he wanted to play with him. And Papa would stay with him. That was his best buddy. Well, Papa died when he was like three or four years old. Logan, my nephew. And he didn't know how to handle it. And I didn't know it was that rough for him. But I used to always go over there and babysit, because I was the main babysitter. And one day, I went over there, and Logan's like, quiet-to-himself type of person. Very smart and intelligent guy, but he went out in the backyard, playing by himself. And a few minutes later, he comes in the house. I said, "What's the matter with you?" He says, "I'm not happy." He says, "I'm mad." I said, "What are you mad at?" He says, "I miss Papa." And I didn't piece two things together at that point. And I said, "What?" He goes, "No." He says, "I'm really mad." He says, "I'm really angry Papa's gone." Till after a few minutes, I said, you know, I didn't think about it. But he went by the stove, like he was running away. I said, "What's the matter?" He goes, "I don't like myself." He says, "I don't like Papa being gone." So, he reached over to where the knives were, by the kitchen sink, I mean, by the stove. And he grabbed the knife out, like he wanted to kill himself. I grabbed the whole room. He knew the Our Father prayer by heart. So, all I could do was just hug him like this and grab the knife this way, from behind him. And I started saying the Our Father prayer. And finally, he just dropped the knife and let it go. And he leaned on me and started hugging me and started crying. And I talked to him. I sat him down on the couch and had a long talk with him. I said, "Buddy, I said, 'If you kill yourself right now, where you think you're gonna go?'" Talking to him like he knew what I was saying. I said, "You're not gonna go to meet Grandpa in heaven, Papa." I said, "You missed your chance of meeting Papa again." I said, "You can't do that." So, I explained the whole situation to my baby sister, which is his mom. She said, "Why didn't you call me right away?" I said, "I could." I said, "Fast action speak right now." I had to do what I had to do, to calm him down and get him in his right mind of thinking. Well, she took, they were Catholic. So, she took him to a priest, to get counseling with the priest. But it worked out, and he never forgot it. He never forgot that. And he's okay today. But with saying the Our Father and talking to him about that, where he was gonna go if he killed himself, he would never see Papa again. And that broke his heart.
So, sum it it all up in your own words. Who did you say Jesus was at that particular time?
My Savior. My Savior. He helped me. My best friend, He really helped me with that.
So, He's more than a Savior for eternal life. He can save you right then.
Right then.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the next portion of this is, what is the difference between a close relationship with your earthly friends versus a relationship with the Lord?
Well, the verse that comes to mind, and I'm not good at remembering where they're at, but in a nutshell, means people will let you down. Your friends will let you down. And we forgive them. We're all human, we make mistakes. But people will let you down. God will not.
Okay, that's a good one.
Well, earthly friends can come and go. The Lord never does. He's always with us, no matter what.
Anybody else?
He always is available to us. Twenty-four-seven. Yeah. Can talk to Him always. Closer...
He doesn't have to go to a doctor's appointment.
Nope. Yeah, I have to make time, spend time with God. Just do it.
He's always there.
Anything else?
His love, God's love is unconditional.
Yes, unconditional. Okay. So, what I did to make, just for time's sake, there's a, on the back of that, there's a sheet that kind of break down the contrast between earthly friendships and friendship with the Lord. On page five.
That's our prayer.
It looks like this.
The back's not...
The back.
Oh, I put it down there.
Yeah. So... Somebody wanna read the first one, earthly friends versus friendship with the Lord? I'll read the first one. So, earthly friends is based on mutual understanding, shared experiences, and human connection. It involves companionship, support, and emotional intimacy. And friendship with the Lord is spiritual in nature. It involves faith, reverence, and submission to a higher power. And it's about seeking guidance, finding purpose, and experience divine love and grace. So, somebody wanna read the next one, which is temporal and eternal?
Temporal versus earthly relationships are temporal, bound by time and space. Life circumstances, personal growth, and changing dynamics influence them. Relationship with the Lord is eternal and transcends earthly limitations. It is based on faith in an eternal being who is unchanging and constant, providing a sense of security and stability amid life's uncertainties. Amen.
Okay. Somebody wanna read the third one?
Earthly friends can provide support and companionship that human capabilities and imperfections ultimately limit them. The Lord is characterized by dependency on God's infinite wisdom, power, and goodness. It involves surrendering one's will and trusting in divine providence, recognizing that God's plans are greater than our own.
Okay. Somebody wanna read the fourth one?
Earthly friends can bring joy, fulfillment, and meaning to our lives, but they may not fully satisfy our deepest spiritual needs. The Lord offers a sense of purpose, fulfillment, and spiritual nourishment that transcends earthly desires and aspirations. It provides a source of hope, peace, and contentment that go beyond material comforts and worldly achievements.
Okay. And the next one?
Early friends, early friends? Friendship may come with conditions and limitations. The Lord, our relationship with the Lord is characterized by unconditional love and acceptance. God's love is infinite, unwavering, and unconditional, regardless of our flaws, mistakes, and shortcomings. It is a love that transcends human comprehension and offers redemption, forgiveness, and grace.
Okay. And in summary, both types of relationships play important roles in our life, but they serve different purposes and fulfill different aspects of our being. Earthly friendships are available and meaningful in their own right. And a relationship with the Lord offers a deeper spiritual connection, eternal significance, and boundless love and grace that human relationships cannot fully replicate. And so, so how do we develop this relationship with Jesus? It's a contrast. Uh, if we're having issues developing friendships with regular people, it might be kind of hard for you to develop a relationship with the Lord, because the Lord is all about people. And so, that's one of the things that, you know, I was sharing with Ron, because whenever he blesses the table, he always said, "May this food give us nourishment, so that we can go out and do your will." And I said, "Do you know what this will includes?" It includes people. And he gets so angry at me when I say that. I said, "So, you can't go out..." You know? So, how do you develop this close relationship with the Lord? It's basically, well, I always pray that the Lord will draw people, because you can't come to the Lord unless He draws you. So, first and foremost, I'm always praying that the Lord will continue to draw you. And I can see God working. I see God working, so I haven't given up. Um, I have a relative in my family who, if you're, if you don't look like you're serving the Lord, you ain't saved. I said, "You can't..." We have this... I said, "You can't save him, because you don't really know." I said, "I think we're gonna, a lot of us are gonna be really surprised when we get to heaven, who's not going to be there, who will be there." But, so, how do we develop this close relationship with Jesus? First of all, it starts with you as the believer praying for those to be drawn in.
I think the very first thing is yourself spending a lot of time with the Lord and in His Word.
Right. But if they don't have a desire to do that, we have to pray that the Lord will give them that desire.
Well, that's part of the time that we spend in the presence of the Lord.
Yes. And then, uh, so, for yourself personally, this is a biggie right here. I want you to think of, what has hindered you from obeying the voice of the Lord? Everybody here is a Confessant Christian, correct?
Selfishness.
Okay.
Pride.
So, selfishness?
Oh, you found it. She found it. Oh, good. Fear. Finding a bad life. Sorry, there's a...
Somebody say fear?
Yeah. Rebellion.
Rebellion.
When you're mad. Busyness, I'll do that later.
Distractions.
Okay.
Distractions.
Yep.
Fear of rejection.
Okay. Fear of rejection.
Arrogance, wanting to do everything on your own.
Yep.
Are y'all writing this down? Okay. So, now, this is personal. So, if you wanna say so, you can. If you're not, you can just write it down. It'll just, it'll be between you and the Lord. So, write down one thing that has hindered you from obeying the voice of the Lord. Think about it. You know the Lord wants you to do it, but you just haven't done it yet. What is, what is that thing that's hindering you from going forth and saying, "I'm no longer gonna let this get in the way. It's no longer gonna be upstaged from what the Lord wants me to do." Mine was fear.
Yours is what?
Mine was fear of what other people thought.
Exactly. Fear of failure.
Mine was fear of what other people thought. I knew the Lord was calling me. But God, can't you call my girlfriends, too? Can't they come? You know, they won't understand this.
Somebody would look at me and say that, that I'm not out there, that I need help. So, that's, you know, to me, that's, I make myself that I don't, that I'm not wanted, or that I'm, that...
And you believe what they said?
Yeah. Good enough.
And it...
Like that.
So, when you, when they say that and you believe it, what does the Scripture say about you?
That I am the, I am saved, and I am the child of God.
And you're more than a conqueror.
You could do all things to Jesus Christ with strength.
Exactly.
Someone said fear of failure. There's also fear of success, because if you do lead someone to the Lord, then you're responsible in helping get them.
That's true, too. I never saw it that way.
And you know, but I've always had that thing, you know, if the Lord places somebody across your path, um, then that's connection. And you gotta find out what that connection is. Sometimes the Lord will give you a connection, which has been the case for me twice since I've been here, is my mother's dog, Toby, who will be eighteen years old in June. Dave saw him, and Dave said, "Who walks your dog?" I said, "The backyard." So, that was a connection. He said, "Do you mind if I walk him?" I said, "Sure, here's the leash." So, he was walking him every day, and that opened up a door for me to witness to him. So, you, don't take those things for granted, because there's a reason behind it. He was relieving me from doing it, but God had something for me to do. And then Toby got, when we first moved here, he got away from me. And I'm running down the sidewalk, calling him, and he's looking back like this. Finally, I just got out of rut, and I couldn't keep up with him anymore. But he had his name, my phone number, and my address on his little thing. So, I went back to the house to get the car, and I said, "I'm just gonna drive around and see if I can find him." I couldn't find him. I said, "Where could he have gone?" Next, before I got home, my phone rang. He said, "May I speak to Valerie Marshall?" I said, "This is her." He said, "I got Toby." And it was the lady that I brought to church with me Sunday, it was her husband. I said, "Okay, well, where are you?" And he gave me the address. I said, "Oh, this is just..." He said, "Yeah, Toby came and was scratching on the door and was driving my dog crazy." I opened the door, and Toby just came right on in. Well, I'm thinking, "Okay, he's old, probably thought he was at the wrong house. He doesn't know the neighborhood." So, that was a connection. So, his wife, I found out, doesn't drive. I just found this out recently.
Yeah.
And he had my number still, and he called me up, and he said, "What church do you go to?" And so, I told him. He said, "You mind if we go with you sometime?" So, they have the little things out there with time, the church start and everything. So, I grabbed a couple and brought it to him. And so, I tried to get her to come today. Uh, she did tell me that her background is Catholic, but her husband came from the Church of God. So, she says she's been going to the churches of God, but they were going up in Oral Valley. And now that they're out here, they wanna get something going. So, he actually called me up and asked me, "Can you take her out to church?" I said, "I'd be glad to take her." And so, in the car, she told me, she said, "Well, Bill is more outgoing than me." She said, "People always go to him."
Was that that cute little girl that you had in church?
Was that that cute little girl that you had in church on Sunday?
Yeah.
She's sweet.
So...
She is, she's soft.
So I tried to get her to come today, but she got a new puppy. So I said, "Okay, I'm not gonna quite say anything yet, but I want to see, can you cage him up or something?" But anyway, uh, we're back on the one thing that has hindered you or stopped you from obeying the voice of the Lord. So, my question to you today is, uh, which area of disobedience are you ready to surrender to the Lord?
Can I say something, Valerie?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna give a testimony about what happened to me. I went to an H O A get-together one night. And this guy that was sitting beside me told me that he was a, um, he was a professor at Stanford and he taught world religions. And I said, "Okay." I said, "Well, what is it that you believe?" And he's, "Nothing," you know.
Ed Gacksky?
So anyway, you know, we kind of left it at that. And the next day, I was praying about that situation and asked God what he wanted me to do. A dangerous question. So he knew, he probably knew I was gonna have to get a strong answer. So I went to church and I was pastor was saying, you know, pray about something. And I was praying, again, I said, "Lord, what do you want me to do about this guy John? He lives not too far from me." And so, I heard this audible voice, I swear, it just sounded like it was audible. It was so clear. He said, "Go." And I said to Carol McBride, who's sitting beside me or standing up beside me, we were praying. And I said to Carol, "Did you say go?" And she said, "No." Okay, I'm supposed to go. He knew I was gonna have to have some booming voice probably tell me. So the next day...
Well, God can do that. That's happened to me.
So the next day, I dialed, you know, John, and I said to him, "You know, I'd like to come over and talk to you about God, would that be okay?" And he said, "Sure, come on over." So I went over there and gave him my testimony and everything. Well, he didn't jump up and say, "I wanna be saved."
You can't go by the response.
But anyway, you know, he didn't kick me out or, you know, argue about anything, but he did listen. So I don't know, whatever became of that, but, you know.
Somebody else is gonna come along in water.
But anyway, I mean, I would, in my own, myself, I would never have...
Okay, this guy has got higher degrees in world religion, you know?
Anyway, so, anyway, that's...
Well, thanks for sharing.
Something that I normally would be fearful about, God took away the fear really.
When God tells you to do something, hurry to do it.
We get in our own way. He, he always opens the door for it to be accomplished, but it's us. So, that's your focus this week, is what area of disobedience are you ready to surrender to the Lord? And we're going to stop right here. I have a lot of, I'm not...